Well, I think it's a little after two o'clock. So it's time to begin the study session for April the 7th of 2020. I think we have, we might be missing a council member or two, but let's do a roll call and see who's here. I see Mr. Whitaker. Present. I see Mr. Luna. Are you present, Mr. Luna? Thank you. Councilmember Duff as well. Mr. Freeman. I'm not seeing Mr. Haredia.
He's here.
Or Thompson. Are they, are you? Oh, there you are. Okay, I get that. There's the other screen. How about Mr. Thompson?
Don't see him here.
Okay. Well, if Mr. Thompson joins our meeting, will someone who has a bigger screen than me, please alert me to that?
We'll do that.
Okay, but for now, it's a couple of minutes after two, so we'll go ahead and, and begin the meeting. This is, as we all know, our Tuesday afternoon meeting where we focus in particular on the city's response to the coronavirus. The first item on our agenda is item 1A. That's to hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction on the current COVID-19 impacts, responses and the city's future actions focusing on public safety and community resources. I see we've got both of our great public safety chiefs with us. Welcome Chief Cost and Chief Kameli.
Thank you.
Mr. Brady, how would you like to proceed?
I think we'll just keep tradition, Mayor, and we'll start with fire medical and then we'll go to the police.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Brady. Mayor Council, thank you again for having us and continuing with the updates on the fire department and the police department here. I'd just like to, that our members are doing very well. They're working very hard, again, being exposed every day, but minimal, minimal number of employees have been sick. Which is a very good thing. We have three that have been tested for the coronavirus currently. Two came back negative and one, the jury's still out. They should, we should know either today or tomorrow on that one. This is due to exposures in the fields. We, now they're going to advise us when we transport patients that have the virus. In the beginning, we weren't being advised, but now when we take patients to the hospital, they will advise us if the patient we brought into the hospital tests positive to the virus or not. So we can alert our members and continue with their temperatures and all. So, so our EOC is still operational, doing a great job maintaining supplies, which is really important for us. That's probably the number one issue is PPE, as we all know. But I have to say, the members over there on the logistics team, purchasing with Matt Bauer, they've been doing a tremendous job, doing all they can to try and get the supplies that we need. Especially the masks. That's a big thing. They're, they're being very conscientious about prices. The prices vary, and so they're being very conscientious about that as well while they're on the search for this. Another, so right now, we're still at about one month. We have a little over a month's supply, but we're saying one solid month for sure. We probably can go a few weeks beyond that of masks and gloves. Gowns, gowns, we don't have quite as long time, but as long of a stretch with gowns, but we do have gowns that they can So we're, we're looking at that as well, but they continue to keep the supply up. Every time they get 100 or 200 masks, they purchase what they can to keep our supply enough to ma, to manage. Another thing we're looking at right now, right now is cloth masks. As you know, the CDC issued about five or six days ago that were out in public, that they recommend that you wear a cloth mask. So right now, the team is looking at that as well, to see what other, what we can do in that arena. People have even offered to make them for us. We just have to buy the supplies. So we're working on that. The, the value with the cost, you know, there's a different thoughts on the cloth mask. The best thing about the cloth mask is they don't do any harm. They, they, we're not going to use them for first response because they're not as good as an N95, but they're better than nothing. And with the cloth mask, what that's going to do is really protect someone else from you. If you have a virus, so many people could be walking around asymptomatic to the virus. So by wearing a mask, that does protect yourself from spreading it to anyone else. And it does provide just another barrier from you and anyone else as well. So that's what the CDC recommends, and that's what we're looking at purchasing today. Also, now what we're looking at, also the crews that are out in the fields. They continue to take the same approach they've been doing when they can, when a patient could meet us outside, they're doing that. Taking our chair, having the patient sit in the chair. We've just started that a week ago. They are utilizing that process. And it's some for, put the patient in a comfortable position while we assess their vital signs. A few other cities now are looking at this approach as well to these patients. They're doing the same in assisted living. When we go into assisted living, they're having them bring the patient out to us. So they're not walking down the hallways and all that as well. So they're looking at, that's how we're approaching assisted living with these patients as well. Our call volume is, is still down. We had a couple of days that were a little higher, but still overall, compared to last year at this time, our call volume is, it varies between 15 and 28% lower than it was last year at this time. And the same for, I don't know what the percentage is for the hospitals, but I know the ERs are not at capacity when our crews are bringing patients. None of the ERs that, to speak of as of yesterday, and even this morning, have not been at capacity, which is a good time. We're anticipating our peak will be, if you look at the projection chart, this has changed. If you've noticed this, the Arizona projection chart now, our peak day is going to be April 23rd. Last week, when I spoke to you all, it was April 28th. And when I look at the data behind this, they, they said this was for a few reasons. They're evaluating, they're putting different weights now on social distancing and also on the school closures. They said these had a bigger impacts than they anticipated, based on what they know from back east. So by closing schools early and the social distancing, they're putting different weights on that to cause these projections to go down. Also, they said they're getting more data from the states as well, so it's actual data they're plugging in. So now our peak time is April 23rd. And the number, if you look at your chart, the number of ICU beds and all that, and the use of hospital beds have dramatically reduced as well. Now, I, I do have a question into the IHME, which is the Institute for Health Metrics, Health Metrics Evaluation from University of Washington. I'm asking if they're also including on these numbers, the average number of patients that are in the hospital at this time for other related complications, like heart issues and things like that outside of COVID. If these numbers are inclusive of that or strictly COVID calls? So, once I get that answer back, I'll be sure to share that with you as well. And lastly, I, I mentioned to you already that we continue to take our, our members' temperatures. That's really important for us to make sure that no one stays at work sick. Sometimes people are asymptomatic, may have a fever. We will send them home if they have 100.4 or higher. And now that they're advising us, if we come into positive, if we transported a positive patient, that's even more important for us. Because again, we'll monitor their temperatures both on and off duty to ensure they're not going to spread the virus or be sick themselves. Another thing, our social services. We've also met with the Mesa Cares Program, and this is in conjunction with that. Our social services have already made phone calls to over 100 folks that are either the most vulnerable, folks that we've been working on for a while now, that, that need social service connections. And also reaching out to assisted living facilities to see what their needs are. If, and I, I have to say that the, the information we're getting back from these folks, they're very, very appreciative. Many of them are doing fine, but the big issue for most of them is just the isolation and not being connected with others. And they say this phone call that they're getting is very, very helpful, and they're very appreciative of it. So we will continue doing that. If they need prescriptions picked up, things like that, we were, we're going to manage all of, all of that as well for these patients that we're calling, and we will continue to do that. And that's the update for fire, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mary. Jeremy?
Hi, Mary. Thanks for the presentation. I got a quick question. So if I heard you correctly, you were saying that you actually are in contact with the University of Washington, is that correct?
I did send an email to the, yes, they have a contact on this website, they have a contact. I did contact them. They responded back on one of my emails, but I'm still waiting to hear back on the other.
And it sounds like, from our perspective or the City of Mesa's team's perspective, like, I know we have a, I apologize if I can't remember his name. I know we have a data analytics guy that actually worked with the fire department when we're looking at some of our other stuff. Does our team corroborate with what they're in fact saying with their analysis? Or have we not done any type of internal analysis on the figures that we're seeing?
So Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, I, it's Mark Castleton I think you're referring to?
Yeah, Mark Castleton.
Yeah, we can surely show this to Mark. I'm not sure if Mark is looking at this data or not, but I can surely, I will make sure he sees it. So I don't know if he's doing the same type of analytics. Mark is giving us our data. He, we get our, our annual data three times a day to compare our data today from last year at this same time. So we, he's managing all of that for us. So he's sending that information to us three times daily so we keep up on the call volume. But for this particular website, I'm not sure.
Okay. Yeah, I just know that I'm seeing different, there's different projections that are all over the place. I, I mean, it would just be nice if we had a, you know, second set of eyes so that we just weren't caught by surprise or something, you know? Maybe at some point in the future, he might be able to check that out for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Are there any other questions for Chief Kameli? All right. Chief, I have a quick question. I know we are transitioning now to the cloth mask, or asking employees and staff who aren't maybe delivering medical services to start wearing cloth masks, which is, I think, consistent with the CDC recommendation for the public leaving our homes. We're encouraged to wear masks now. I think I saw in, maybe it was the EOC report, that, and I think you may have mentioned it earlier, that the, the department is looking at acquiring some cloth masks for when your staff is, is working, not providing medical assistance, but just out and about doing other types of tasks. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. Just so when they're out and about, when they go to the store, when they do other things outside of the emergency calls, because we'll continue with our N95s. But yes, so they're just, it's just one more layer of protection. It was recommended by the CDC, so that's something we're looking at as well. Once we start getting prices on it, but yes, that's just one more layer of protection to help with this whole social distancing.
And I know there's a lot of folks now that are doing homemade masks of one variety or another. One of our great librarians made a donation. I, I went by and picked up from the city building today, Sarah Lipitz. Thank you, Sarah, for these masks. I will wear them proudly. But it just seems like this is going to be an ongoing challenge for a lot of families and individuals and even city employees that maybe aren't as handy as Sarah with a, with a sewing machine. Is there a way that, that we could, I mean, what's the availability on the market for cloth masks that we can make available to other departments or even, you know, just folks in the City of Mesa?
Sure. Mayor Giles, members of the council, we're looking at all of that. We're even looking at possibly some seamstress, if we buy the material, if they're willing to make it, things like that. And then in, in communication with Mr. Brady, however many, we're, we're, right now, we're looking at different vendors that'll make it, and we're getting prices back on it right now. We're looking at about $2 to $3 apiece that some of the prices are coming back at. But that will be a city decision of how many we want to purchase and how fast they can make them. If they say it's going to take a month to get them, you know, that's a little long. But if we can get them sooner and other cities in agreeance with that, we can surely bring the quotes forward.
Okay, well, I, we might be hearing, I think, more and more from members of the public with maybe some other suggestions and just people that are sitting at home busily, working on their sewing machines, making masks for, for friends and neighbors. Mr. Freeman, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you mentioned that call volume was down 15 to 18% lower than from a year ago, is that correct?
That's correct. The days ve, Councilmember Freeman, the days vary, but yes, they, they vary based on last year at this time.
But are you finding in your call loads that we're, you're responding to today, are they more flu-related type calls? You know, we track the type of calls that we go on. So do you find certain areas of the city where they're more prevalent than other areas of the city in our caller load? Have you done that analysis?
Mayor Council, Vice Mayor Freeman, we ha, I've asked Mark Castleton to give me the data on where the volume is low. And it seems like it's low on all areas like MBAs, cardiac. For flu, generally that could be an ill B, a basic call. They, we don't have like just a flu query that we can do. We have either fever or things like that that they can query. But so all areas of the call types are down and, except structure calls, those are pretty steady. Those have not changed yet. But basically, from the last data he gave me, which was two days ago, every area of a medical type has been lower.
I guess my, my, my reasoning is if we find certain areas in the city where we might have more fever or flu-like related symptoms, that we could concentrate more resources in that area so that it doesn't spread to other parts of the community. I'm just saying isolation and all the things that we're doing today, that if, if you're tracking it and you're finding more areas like firefighters were tested for COVID-19, and two of them came back negative, but yet one is, you haven't received the results yet. But what if it was positive? Where was that firefighter at? What area of the city? So that we could concentrate perhaps resources and let medical staffing, not only our first responders, but also the emergency rooms and hospitals.
Mayor Vice Mayor Freeman, that's, we will definitely ask Mark Castleton if he can kind of query the areas as well to see which areas they have. That would be helpful. We will do that.
For instead of reactive, proactive on possible outcomes in our area in our city. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, Mr. Haredia has a question.
Yeah, on the same line of a question from the mayor. Mary, have we heard anything on the cloth mask being, I know CDC recommends it, but locally, are we moving towards that piece? Or in, in ensuring that public wears masks? Have you heard anything?
Mayor Councilmember Haredia, so for the response, for our responders, we're going to continue wearing the regular mask, our N95 surgical mask for the patients. And we even have P100s that I showed last week if we need to. The cloth mask, we, we would use them if we find them, and we will use them just when we're out and about in the, in the community, but not on emergency calls. So they are a benefit because they do protect other people from ourselves when we have a mask on. Because so many people go around, don't even know they, they don't have any symptoms, but can still spread the virus. So there is a value to them. And, and there's so many ways on DIY, and there's people are making their own like the mayor mentioned. But there is a value, and that's why they recommend it, because they're saying any bit of social distancing we can do, and even if it's with just a mask, they would, they recommend it.
I guess, I guess my point, maybe on, on the public's use, chief or mayor, I know several cities across the country are somewhat mandated. I think like Miami, Miami-Dade are now mandating some, some, some sort of covering. I'm not sure if we're there yet, but if we've heard anything on, on ensuring that folks have some masks, maybe just right now as a recommendation, if you do go out for travel, to, to wear some sort of covering.
Councilmember Haredia, I think if you read the CDC recommendation, it, it is actually, the wording is such that it suggests if you live in an area where there's a significant amount of an outbreak, that, that they're recommending that if you live in those areas, you may consider using a mask. That would be their recommendation. And especially if you're going to, and I think they mentioned specifically grocery stores or pharmacies where it's difficult to keep your social distancing. That's when they're recommending the mask. I have not seen from the CDC a broad kind of recommendation that everyone in every situation needs to wear it. Now, I think it doesn't hurt, but I think we need to be careful. At least that's how, when I read it, those are the, that's the language they're using right now. So I sus, I suspect in those areas, communities where there's a continual significant outbreak, that they may be promoting that, mandating that. But I haven't heard anything, at least in our area where that has, that discussion's taken place at the county or the state level, not, not yet anyway.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Luna?
Mayor, yes, I was, you know, going back to the mask. I had a community member make 30 masks for my wife to take to her, to the hospital where she works. So we are finding a lot of community members wanting to make masks and to, to really get back to the community. Are, is there a repository? Is there going to be a number, maybe it's Brady can respond to that, where people can call and make a donation of masks? Because we're really seeing the public want to get back to communities. Is this something that we can give out numbers as part of our Mesa Cares Program?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, we haven't gone there because this whole discussion of masks really just taken off recently. To be honest with you right now, the conversations we've had just as early as this morning, is we're now obviously getting city employees that are here, who are working out in the field, and they're requesting masks. And we're not able to provide those to them because right now, any masks that come in are going to the hospitals or to the first responders. So we literally are not, we're cautious about taking from that inventory with the idea that they could run out in two months or so. And so we've not decided to acquire that. Now, we've talked about internally, if we have employees who would like to wear masks, we certainly support that. How we would provide those, we're talking about internally, maybe having individuals, again, individuals who are on the sideline a little bit, being able to make masks, maybe even the librarian that provided some to the mayor. We have not had a discussion about a community request. I think part of the ramifications there are just we, I just trying to be careful how we think this through as we manage expectations. We certainly would like to provide those for city staff, but if we do that, then you're going to have the community in its entirety. And I just don't know, we could do it, I just don't know what that number looks like. That's, I'm only worried about it once we open it up. I think we could encourage people to make their own and talk to their neighbors. I think that's happening now. I'm not sure what the messaging wants to be for everyone to have one. I don't know what the capacity in the community is, how fast we could get those out. We're open to the idea, I just, I'm trying to imagine, right now, our focus is, right now, is trying to get, take care of our employees today, who are out in the front, who are out working today. As far as the rest of the community, we really haven't had a chance to sit down and kind of calculate how that would work.
You know, I, I would guess this is going to continue to progress in the community. I think the, nationwide, I think you're going to see more and more a common social practice of people wearing masks and, you know, at least until the, for a few months. So I would, I, I think this will continue to evolve in our community. I think for now, we're, we're kind, it's up to the DIY, you know, proud to, to find ways, creative ways to, to make masks for yourself and your family. There's some, I've, I've seen a lot of things on the internet about handkerchiefs and bandanas and ponytail holders and, you know, creative ways to, to do this. I am, I, I, I am concerned about our city employees. It seems like we're going to need to find, as I've, and I've seen pictures of construction sites and industrial workers, I think more and more, that's a kind of a common piece of equipment is to provide masks, you know, not surgical or medical masks, but cloth masks, more for social distancing. And I, I don't think the, the medical impact is significant, but my, my suspicion is this is something we're going to be talking about for a few weeks to come, and it'll continue to evolve. Any other questions for Chief Kameli? Thank you very much, Mary. Appreciate all you're doing. Chief Cost, how's our police department?
Soon as I find the unmute button. Okay, I have it. Police department's doing well. It's masks, masks mask for us pretty much every day. And if we didn't have that incredible relationship with Mesa Fire and Medical, we would be hurting with PPE like most of the law enforcement agencies around the country. So a heartfelt thanks goes out to Chief Kameli and her senior staff. And the work that is going on in that emergency operations center every day is, is truly remarkable as far as that team effort. The cloth masks is something for us as well, especially when you're talking about areas like dispatch and records where people are, are close to each other. But we want to try the best we can to prevent the asymptomatic spread. So we're looking at different options for that, Mayor and Council, to, to provide those for our folks. And we're having an awful lot of people, including businesses, mattress companies, local companies within Mesa that are, are looking to help us. So I do think that this is going to continue to grow as far as the cloth mask discussion and, and our protocols with our officers out in the field with the, the personal protective equipment. Reference calls for service, we are down just slightly again, so I didn't change much from last week. So when you do a comparison this time last year and then month to month, it's about a 3% reduction in dispatch calls. So it's about 120 calls for service. So not a, not a big reduction in that regard. Obviously, with the streets as quiet as they are, our accidents are going down, residential burglaries, there's some, there's some categories that are going lower. But then it's evening out a little bit with some disturbance calls, a little bit of uptick on domestic violence as we track that on a daily basis. And, and calls, neighbor trouble and things like that, that you would expect with everybody sheltered in place and at home except for essential businesses. We are getting a handful of calls. It's, it's not a huge spike since the governor's order. And obviously, with, with our order within the City of Mesa, still have been, we're in education process. We haven't had to re-educate or cite or arrest anybody for violation of, of that code. So that's good. You know, like, an example would be just last night, we had a, a bar that was operating in the southeast portion of Mesa. They were operating as if, you know, that there, there was no order. They were educated, they weren't happy, but that bar was shut down and they've since complied. And so that's what we're asking for the public, is to make sure to let us know when things like that are happening and, and we get those calls and we go address them and educate. And, and that's been effective so far within the, within the community. Our officers are doing well. We are conducting wellness checks, just like Chief Kameli and her group before and after shift. And social distancing within our squad rooms, the calls for service, certainly people are, are coming out to meet us. So it's, you know, the, the, the why we live in Mesa is up and strong because the citizens are really cooperative with coming out and meeting us outside and talking to us. And they're very understanding with our officers. And we still, obviously, with the, with the, just a small percentage decrease on calls for service, we are still responding to 911 and emergency. And the officers are doing their jobs and they're protected, and they're taking all their safeguards. And, you know, week to week, we're, we're really proud of what our men and women are doing. And so that's a real quick reader's digest within the, the police department, and I'll open it up for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Freeman?
Hi, Chief. Thank you for your report. Just wondering, are your patrol sergeants and other sergeants today, maybe you said this earlier, check the well-being of your, of their personnel? Like, take their temperatures? Are you doing that at all? Or when you have any type of exposure, possibly on a call? Are you, you know, even for fire, are we recording those type of exposures for future, you know, health concerns down the road? But I guess primarily, are you checking your health by temperature at all?
Mayor, Councilman Freeman, yes. Absolutely, we are checking temperatures. We have been for a few weeks now, before shift and after shift, to all the, the personnel, not only responding in the field, but out at training as well. And also within our buildings, as civilian professional staff come in the building, there is a, a point and a procedure that they all are checked for temperature before they enter the building. So that's going well. And then, yes, we are, we put a, a procedure in effect that we're essentially tracing any sort of contact that we feel our officers had with, with anybody that could be positive COVID-19 or, or being tested, just like fire is doing as far as a, a tracing back and finding those, those individuals and making sure that we watch our squads or anybody who's had contact with that person.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council. Other questions for Chief Cost? Okay, Chief. Great, thanks. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda, Council, is item 1B. That is to hear an update and discuss Mesa Cares Program, a citywide initiative to assess community needs and connect residents and businesses to available resources as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Brady, who is, who are we going to hear from on this?
Well, we could decide to sing Happy Birthday now or after her presentation, but for her birthday, we decided to bring Carrie Kent into Mesa so she could present. Oh, there you go. Happy birthday to Carrie. Thank you, Glenn. So for her birthday, we asked her to come and make this presentation to you.
Happy birthday, Carrie. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Pleasure, pleasure to be here and report out on the progress we have made since I last saw you on Thursday and shared with you our plans for Mesa Care. So it's day one, but I'm going to share with you a little bit of information that, that I've received. I've received. I, I just wanted to let you know, in case you didn't know already, we truly have such an amazing team here with the city of Mesa. They have spent, I had hundreds of employees spend all day Friday, Saturday, and Sunday getting ready for this launch yesterday. It truly is an amazing team effort. There's too many departments to name. It's touched practically every department to get this program up and running over the past three days. So thank you to everybody who's been involved. But we did launch Mesa Cares yesterday, April 6th. You can see a number of outreach that we have done through press releases, social media campaigns. We launched a video today. Thank you, Councilmember Luna. You translated that into Spanish for us, and it's on Mesa en Espanol. We do have additional outreach that is coming. We have a next, a next door post that's going to be going out today or tomorrow to seek feedback. We have an email going out through our neighborhood outreach group, through our neighborhood leaders. In addition, we've been in contact with Mesa Public Schools, Gilbert Public Schools. It's going to send out information about our CARE hotline and our website to those resident students here in the city of Mesa. We're also thinking about at some locations, dropping off flyers of our CARE hotline and website in the, at the schools, where we have meal pickup boxes that are, that are going, going out. And we're also looking at, with the grocery stores allowed, allows to post some CARE hotline in their, in their windows. So we have here our, listed here, our Mesa Cares website. You can see that located here. You have some screenshots that we sent out to you that shows some information about the CARE's hotline. And as you can see, we are open every day from 8 to 5. We have librarian staff that are standing by to help, to help provide any assistance they can and connect them to resources. Really kudos to our library staff, as well as our Department of Innovation and Technology staff. They spent four hours on Sunday going through training and making sure the technology worked, to make sure our librarians were comfortable with the information that was on the website, and to make sure, again, the technology was working. They actually ran through some, some scenarios and so that they were prepared. Here's a list of, on the website, and again, it's still being built, but you can see a number of the particular categories right now that we're grouping things in, whether it be food or healthcare, assistance to our veterans and senior citizens and so forth. And if you drop down in those screens, you can see that we're starting to build those community resources that are not only available here within the city of Mesa, but they could be some state resources, some federal resources. If you go through these, and you don't see maybe a nonprofit that you're familiar with, certainly let us know. We had some of our staff go through over the weekend and contact some of these organizations. We do have some that have closed down during this time, but if there isn't, if there isn't one you see, please let us know. And again, we are building these as we go. I also mentioned last week that our website is available in multiple languages, and I just wanted to share with you some examples, whether it be in Spanish, or the, we have the rise of our Asian district here in Mesa, so we have Vietnamese, Korean that we have listed there, and how that translates into a number of different languages as well. So this week, we're focusing on, I mentioned, we have employees that are reaching out into the community. We have thousands of contacts, and we're, we're trying to understand what their biggest community, their greatest needs are to address, because when we get these federal CAREs dollars, we want to make sure that we are putting the monies towards those greatest needs in our community. And as Chief Kameli said earlier, our residences and businesses and different organizations are really appreciating the personal contact. They know that the employees that are calling are going through their own difficult times during this pandemic, and so to get a call from one of our employees checking in on them, really showing that really Mesa truly cares. We were also sharing, when we're, when we're doing these surveys, we're also sharing our 480644 CARE hotline, so should they have additional questions or need resources in the future, after they've completed their survey with us, then they have a phone number that they can contact us, contact us back. So our employees, as I mentioned, today, yesterday, today, and Wednesday, they are blanketing the city and trying to get as much feedback as they possibly can to collect that data, so that I can bring those categories back to you next week of what the, the greatest needs are. Those were day one stats, but I'll let you know, by 1 o'clock today, we had over 2,000 calls that were made, over 900 surveys that were actually completed, over 100, and those were individual surveys, over 100 organizations provided that feedback to us, and over 190 surveys were completed by our Economic Development Falcon Field and Downtown Transformation staff. In addition, we launched our, our call center, and those were stats from yesterday with 45 calls. We're up to over 100 calls right now. And we just launched, again, this, this phone number yesterday, so we certainly expect that more and more calls will be, will be coming our way. But certainly, as Councilmember Heredia mentioned last week, not only are they taking the inbound calls and trying to connect folks to services, but they're also doing those community assessments that we're, our outbound callers are doing as well. Our inbound callers are being asked to participate in these surveys and, and try to get as much information about what their, their needs are. So they are supplementing the surveys that are currently being, being done. Our library staff, and as well as working with our communications team, is working with a frequently asked question list and, and sharing that amongst all the, the staff that are taking the inbound calls, so we ensure that we're giving consistent information. If there's issues that are coming up or questions that are being asked, to make sure we're following up, researching those, and adding to our website additional, additional services. Yesterday, we, we launched our, our different social media sites. Our Facebook post alone reached over 10,000 people yesterday, as well as our Mesa Cares website. We had over 1,000 people that touched our, our website yesterday. We're also working with staff, providing some training and making sure that they are ensuring that their time that is going towards these, these COVID efforts are, are being tracked, whether it be through personnel time or through purchases. And as I mentioned, we are still waiting for guidance on the CARES Act, and so we know exactly how this money, what programs this money can be going towards, as well as to make sure what the criteria and eligibility and so forth are. So in the coming weeks, we're, we should get more information about, about the program. So as I mentioned, this week, we're certainly focusing in on our community assessment results, have the call center up and running. I'll come to you next week and tell you some of the assessments, information that's being done. And even though we're collecting over these three days, as I mentioned last week, is that we're going to continuing to seek feedback from the community. We have surveys and so forth that are going out, and, and continue to get information, because what we might be focusing in on the first and second month might change for the third and fourth month, or by weeks. So we're continuing to gather that information as well. But certainly want to mention our, our information, again, of a way that residents can reach our city staff. We have our CARE hotline at 480644CARE. We have our mesaza.gov/mesacares website. And certainly, we have found that our, our social media presence and our followers are, continue to increase, which means our residents are certainly, they go to us for information. And so please, if, if the residents and those that are listening or share with friends, please follow us at City of Mesa at Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, that will get you the latest information that's happening on what's going on with this pandemic. And then certainly you can find us on Mesa en Espanol as well. So with that, that is what we have done since, since last Thursday. We've been pretty busy, but pretty proud of, of the amazing team that we have here with the city of Mesa. And certainly, look, if there's additional feedback that you would like to provide, we are very, very open to suggestions on how we can meet the, the needs of our community in any way that we can. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Carrie. I, I just have a quick question on the, the timing. I know that, so it sounds like the next week, we're going to continue to be very busy with outgoing calls, conducting the needs assessment. I think you said about, that maybe at our, at our meet, one of our meetings next week, you'll come back with a report that summarizes what those, what the needs assessment is? Is that, I know we're, we're moving very quickly, but is that, are we going to literally have the results of these outbound calls and, and start to draw some conclusions and make some recommendations one week from today?
Mayor, yes. That is, that is the plan. On the 14th, we plan to bring you the themes of the needs that are out there in the community, at least the immediate needs that, that is out in the community right now. We're trying to be proactive in developing what those, those needs are, so that when we receive the money, hopefully, the CARES money in the following weeks, that we can be prepared with what, what those services should be. Do our nonprofits have the, the capacity that they could continue to serve additional, additional residents and businesses in those particular areas? Should there be certain programs that there are needs of our residents that maybe the city of Mesa might have to administer? So we're trying to be proactive in anticipation of those funds that will be coming our way.
Mayor, can I just jump in a little bit? I think that's why we're trying to accelerate the needs assessment, and not that it, I think Carrie mentioned it, not that it concludes next week, but we want to make sure we come back to council and say, okay, based on this very aggressive effort that we've done right now, that's going on right now, here's what we've identified as immediate needs. And then what we want to be able to do is make sure the council's on board with kind of creating these categories of the needs, because then we've got to go back, is then we've got to figure out, okay, if the need is food, or if the need is rental assistance or utilities, whatever it might be, we need to then, after agreeing that these are the needs we're going to focus on right now, we've got to come back and develop, or working with nonprofits, or even internally develop, what is the criteria, what does the program look like that we're going to stand up to disperse the dollars? And we can't do that. We can't create the programs unless we know what the categories are and begin creating the definition of criteria, who would be eligible for those. So that, that's why we want to try to do that, because the hope is, by the time where we've come back the following week after, you know, in two weeks from now, we'll have, we'll start getting better guidance on the, on the dollars and how we can disperse them and what would be eligible. But we want to be in a position that we've already defined, at least for right now, the initial needs. We've also given some good thought, and the programs on how we would begin to get that money into the public's hands. But those programs usually take months to figure out. We've got, we're going to try to do it in less, in a couple of weeks, because our goal is, we, we want to be in a position where the sooner we can let people know about the funding, what might be available, and the criteria for doing that, and identifying individuals, we can get the money out the door as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Heredia.
Yes, and maybe Carrie and Chris, I think I mentioned it before in a previous meeting around coordination with other cities and figuring out, you know, if there is some of these, some of these needs that might be across the valley, or some, some of those needs that could be leveraged with other cities. I'm imagining there's, there's conversations with, with them as well on how we can leverage those dollars coming in.
Yes. Councilor Heredia, Mayor, Councilman Heredia, we're already having those conversations, especially on the additional dollars that are available for providing homeless shelters and emergency assistance there. We're, we're certainly having those conversations. I was just on a phone call yesterday with these Valley city managers and discussing all the programs that are going in their locations. So certainly we'll look at that, and, and, and we're talking, having those conversations now. I think at the end of the day, too, we want to make sure, though, as we look at it, every city will be getting a certain amount of dollars, so as we share ideas on how that can be done. I can see regionally, the CDBG dollars will be probably used to play, used to help and resource those kinds of efforts. The other more direct dollars, I suspect the council may want to look at making those very local and making those very direct payments to small businesses, residents that are in Mesa, because that's how the dollars are being allocated proportionally by population. If there's opportunities to work with adjoining communities to, and make those a more robust programs that leverage it to a greater degree, I will certainly be open to that conversation.
Thank you, Council. Other questions on this agenda item? Yes, Jen.
Okay, there's my mute. I have one question about educational needs, especially students with special ed needs. Is that a category in which we're, we'll be dealing with these dollars, or is that outside of the purview of the dollars that we're giving? I've had some inquiries about that.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilman Duff, I don't know. That's not a, that's a pretty limited category. I think, I know there, there's an education allocation of dollars, but not to the cities, but more to the state and to the school districts. So we'd have to follow up and find out if there's something directed to them. Not typically something the cities would be involved in, but we certainly can ask Mesa Public Schools or others and see what resources they may be anticipating.
Okay. I'll inquire with them on, on the funds that they're receiving, if that would be appropriate to direct those concerns to the board. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is that some of our lower income citizens do not have access to computers and internet that easily, and a lot of the assistance requires a lot of online applications. With our libraries being closed, is there other alternatives for those who maybe don't have a smartphone or don't, some of these forums, if you have to remit forms, do uploads, you know, do an attachment, doing it from your smartphone isn't even sufficient. I don't know. There's some limitations there to the populations who need some assistance the most on internet access and computers.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilman Duff, that's a great point, and it's something that kind of is always in the back of our minds and how we can communicate with that population. Surprising enough, we find that the apps, the phone apps seem to be the best way to get hold of almost, generally, most of the population. So, but, to your point, I think we have, that, that's, that's our challenge, is to figure out how we can connect with all parts of our community, and if it means that we have to provide hard copies and find a way to safely and healthy, you know, way to kind of get that information for them and, and help them be connected to these programs, that's something we'll, we'll look at.
Thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
Chris, I have a question for you. I see the letter that was sent out. Steve Wright was CC'd us on it. Our population for our city, are we below the threshold of 500,000? Are we considered above 500,000?
It depends on what year you ask. If you, if you use the last very official census of 2010, we were below. If you use the census numbers, I think from 2018 going forward, 2018 and 2019, of course, we're over the half million. We believe and we, we, we expect, based on conversations that Mr. Butler has had with the, the Department of Treasury, that we should fall within that half million.
Yeah, Chris. This is Scott. I'm, I'm on the phone. Just wanted to confirm that we have received instruction from Treasury that 2018 numbers will be utilized unless they are able to get the 2019 numbers. So we, we, we feel very positive about that response.
So the answer is yes, we'll be in that half million category.
Okay. Thank you. I was just reading the letter, and I just wanted to make sure that we were. that we were qualified for that because I was surprised. It said the city of Atlanta was almost 2,000 below that threshold. And I knew that, I knew that we were close, but I didn't know what year we're going to consider. So thank you, Scott, for checking on that.
Okay, Council, other questions on or comments on this agenda item? Okay, well, happy birthday again, Carrie. We'll look forward to the next week, getting the results of these, all the great work that's going on right now with all the phone calls that are taking place. And I think we all need to do our best to push that telephone number 644-CARE out as really... Mr. Brady, I've been telling people, that's really the, the first number people ought to start with if they have COVID-19 related questions that they want to direct to the city. Is that, is that...
We, absolutely, Mayor. We agree. That's where we want to, the Mesa Cares Program is something we want everyone to hear about and use that number. That's the, that's where we have our resources dedicated right now to assist the residents, the citizens of Mesa right now. That's, that's our focus.
Okay, great. Thank you. Council, that concludes the agenda items that we had to talk about, other than scheduling of meetings. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Brady. Before I do that, I just want to make a pitch for another one of the, the summits that we'll be having this Thursday, broadcast on mesaz.gov/digitalsummit. This week, the topic will be education. So we're going to have Dr. Lesser, our school superintendent for Mesa Public Schools, along with Dr. Bergman, the Mesa Community College president, and our librarian Heather Wolf, talking about what resources are available to families who have kids at home, you know, learning online as a result of the COVID-19 virus. So I think this is going to be a very educational, no pun intended, broadcast and hope that people take advantage of it. Mr. Brady, what does the rest of our schedule look like?
Thank you, Mayor. We will be having a study session coming up this Thursday morning at 7:30 a.m. So we'll look forward to seeing you then.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Just by unanimous consent, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.